Oh, yeah, Cassie will be here. Good evening. I call to order the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. The time is 7:07. Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, as a reminder, if you wish to address the board for public commentary, please make sure to fill out the public commentary forms located on that back table and turn it in to our Secretary Jamie. Superintendent Shaw, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
Uh, there aren't, sir.
Okay.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. Superintendent's comments. Superintendent Shaw?
I have enough for this first go around, sir.
Okay. Public commentary. Darla, do we have any for board agenda items?
Yes, we do. Yvonne?
I didn't turn myself on. You know how it works.
Oh, I do. I just want to say thank you for doing something about that Manor School traffic. I was trying to get either in or out of my neighborhood the other day. Cars are backed up to the CVS. I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands just trying to get through an intersection. So, thanks for that. And I just, you're doing another one at Custer? Changing that layout too, so, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. That's all.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our board discussionary, action items and reports, and our contracted services. I believe Darla, you had something to say on this one?
No.
No, on the reports?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
All right, that brings us down to our consent agenda items. Are there any items that a board member would like to have moved off the consent agenda item and move to new business?
Yes, I would like to pull 2A, which is the approval of minutes for the August 27th work session and move it to new business.
Now, do we have to do a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda minus 2A and approve as consent agenda item and approve the items that you recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Mrs. Flynn, do we have any new hires here tonight?
We do. I know of a couple who are here in Dowlin. And I don't know, are any other of our, are you telling?
I'm Trina.
Trina, okay. And we have Trina Ott who are here. So, if you both, if we could all stand, but if you both would walk up to the podium, introduce yourself, introduce if you brought anyone with you, and we appreciate you being here tonight. If you're gonna walk around here and shake everyone's.
Well, you can tell us where, you can tell us where this is podium, you can tell us where you're teaching, where you come from, where you graduated.
Okay, I'm Trina Ott, and I'm gonna be the resource teacher in the kindergarten classroom. I understand that Monroe Public Schools is moving to support students who have special needs at an earlier age so that they could hopefully remain with their peers. And I am so excited about that. I have taught all special education for almost 30 years, and I'm super, super excited to be here.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Great.
Welcome back.
Congratulations.
My name is Erin Doan. I am currently the varsity girls and boys swimming coach and just recently expanded my role with Monroe Public Schools to be the coordinator of community education. And I'm so thankful for it and really excited for this opportunity, so thank you very much.
Erin, did you bring anyone with you?
Oh, I did, actually. My husband, Aaron Doan, is his, with A-A-R-O-N. And my parents, Pat and Ron Evans.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, yes.
Thank you.
All right, next can I get a motion on the support for the superintendent's evaluation?
I will move, oh, I will move to assign the effectivity to superintendent. I'm sorry.
We, have we add that right now?
I believe so, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, wait, we didn't go back to.
Because new business should be the consent agenda 2A.
Oh, yep, yep, you're right. Sorry about that.
No, you're okay.
So, we're going back to item 2A?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're back to 2A. Darla, you're on.
Okay, I reviewed the minutes because I was looking at context, and the actual session went on for 88 minutes. It started at 5:30 and ended at 6:58. If my math is wrong, let me know. The recording was only for 50 minutes and 33 seconds. Therefore, 38 minutes of our meeting has no record. There is no written record and no audio record of our meeting.
I think somebody's gonna answer.
So, because of the power outages, if you recall, there was issues with recording. They are being sliced together, but that takes a little time to get those sliced with everything at the start of the school year. So, the rest of the recording will be uploaded as soon as they can be pieced together. When the power went out, all the recording systems shut down. So, everything had to be restarted. So, those others will be, it's four different recordings that have to be put together.
Are they all from the work session or are they from, okay, so I'm going to?
The power during the recording was just during the work session.
I would like to make a motion that we postpone the approval of these minutes until that process is complete.
I support that. I think that's logical, give Jamie the chance to.
Yeah, okay.
Not just the work session or all three sets?
Just the work session.
Anything that is missing meeting minutes.
Missing anything is the session?
Then that's what we're referencing.
So, we would have to make the motion to approve the other two sets and then just postpone the work session. You have a total of three sets of minutes.
Correct.
So, do you want to agree with that?
So, we, we already approved the consent agenda, which included the other meeting minutes. The only thing we have not approved is 2A, which is these meeting minutes.
Well, actually, 2A is.
Oh, that's right, 2A is all of them.
Do you, do you want to have your motion to say amend for the work session only?
Yeah.
Darla, with approval of the other two?
So, I'll approve the other two meeting minutes with the.
And I will support that as amended.
Okay. Did you catch that, Jamie, what the motion is? Thank you for that reference.
Is there support for this motion?
Yes, I support that.
All right. Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Sure.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. All right, we are back to, you'd already made a motion for the.
Yes, I did to, to have a right of effective. And I will reinstate that motion.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. I believe that brings us to the Manor Loop. Superintendent Shaw?
Yeah, so it is a great excitement, as it was alluded to earlier with the Manor Parent Loop, that we're recommending that Disborough Excavation and Trucking be awarded the bid. We had three different, we had three companies that put in bids for that work at a total of, not to exceed $10,000. And that would be paid for out of the sinking fund. That, for those out there, that is being ran from the park that sits behind Manor. Right along the fence line, there's a paved driveway up by Manor School. That's our property right there. And so, we were fortunate, the city worked alongside of us to grant an easement contract with us. So, we'll be, once we get that all put together, we'll communicate to all the parents the new way of entering that area. And so, it should and will actually alleviate all of that congestion in front of Manor when it comes to our parents and their pickup.
I would move to accept the bid from Disborough for the parents to leave that Manor and the cost of that to exceed $10,000 dollars from the sinking fund.
To support?
I'll support that. And I think that's important because, you know, we need to get the parents off the road, sort of speak, so the neighbors don't have to deal with that. And it's much safer for the children. So, I think that's what it's really all about. So, hopefully, this will improve like Yvonne said, the whole area, so. Thanks. Darla?
I concur. I think it's super important, and I congratulate this administration and team for moving forward on these, on these goals. Is there a timing for completion of this project?
So, I know that it wouldn't shock me that they're rolling in there tomorrow, so. No, we're, we're really, I'm, we're looking at mid next week. And so, hopefully, that, we're communicating to parents when it's all prepped and ready. So, honestly, the goal would be, worst case, is September 23rd, but as soon as.
So, you're gonna beat Ray'sville?
What's that?
It's gonna beat Ray'sville?
So, they're ready to get in there and get going.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Could we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Custer Parental Loop Discussion Only. Superintendent Shaw?
So, I'm sending around right now a picture and hoping, Mr. Payne, you can put up on the screen Google Maps and pull in down on Custer. So, a few weeks ago, we were talking, this is sort of beauty, and looking at coming in in this spot right here and looping around. We're fortunate to have community members come in and talk to us and share. They really didn't like that idea. So, we're coming back to, to the board, just as a, as beginning stages, is coming in right over here off, right across from Fenmore, straight up behind the soccer field and looping right here in Exeter. It's about 2,200 feet, and if we double lane this section right here, we can get about 250, 260 cars into that area, so they would not be there. What we do is this spot right here would be gated, and so during the night, that's gates closed. During the day, it would stay open, but there's a gate right here that would stay closed so that would, parents show up early because we know we try to get them, they not show up early. They don't. You'll still get there, you'd still get almost 150, 200 cars in that stretch right there. So, we're, what we got, we're working on right now is, gotta work with the county on a call over. Plus, we're gonna have to work on making sure we're all set when it comes to any drain issues that we have right there. And then we'll bring a cost from the board. Over here, we'll have, we're gonna have the fence in this little playground area, which is something we need to do anyways. And then we'd be looking at putting up probably, it's gonna be like a 35 by 40 pavilion right here. Because what'll happen is we have little kids, this building coming here, and then students coming out this door here and over because that'd be the one spot for all parents to meet. This pavilion would be set up in a manner where there'd be sides on it so you can pull the curtains back, so that way kids can't go running out. This little stretch that would be able to go, right here, would be about 10 cars to 11 cars that they can load and unload at a time. So, if you're ever watching Ray'sville right now, they're able to do six or seven cars at a time. Manor's gonna be around that six, seven car area. But because of the sheer number of parents that come in here, we're gonna have it set up where they can handle eight to 10 cars being able to load and unload at a time. One of the goals that we had with all this was first, getting cars off of the road, and then second, making it safe so that we don't have kids crossing in front of buses, two cars or where cars are moving. And so, we have, that's what we have right here and over here. The other problem became is when we get into this area, when cars are parked there, you can't leave. You're stuck, okay? So, this one right here, I appreciate the community coming and talking with us because it forces us to think a little bit more. With this option right there, it gets everybody away from buildings. Like I said, we'll fence in that playground, so that way that's safe. They won't, by the time we do dismissal, I mean, we don't put kids on playground anyways. And we'll drop off. So, more to come on there. I've asked Tim to start making phone calls again to the dimensions, so he already knows that it's 2,200 feet long and can start working on getting numbers generated. It is our hope that we'll be able to give you a further update at our next meeting and the progress of this right here. And so, like I said, next steps are working with any engineering that we may need to do and/or working with the county on the drain too. So, any questions on that?
Is it, is it one lane or two lanes?
So, it would be from the road to the back of the soccer field, two lanes.
Okay.
Everything else is one lane. Because when we get to the soccer field, they'll actually converge like they do over at Ray'sville into one lane behind, so that way we, there's no pushing or shoving as we're getting up towards the kids.
So, we're gonna zipper?
Yeah. We'll teach how to zipper.
All right.
I think it's been, again, that it's safety issue, and I think this is great. Plus, it also helps the community later.
For.
Gets everybody off the street.
Gets everybody off the. And, and we know that they, they service over 200 cars there and drop off pickup. So, having an area that can actually handle, if every parent showed up there. And also, if we were looking at doing about the eight to 10 cars, you know, that's 20 minutes of load at 10 cars, 200 cars through that time period, so. If they did it every minute, so hopefully expedite that. I appreciate Scott Hopper because he's actually the one that organized the system so that we have a person standing back, radioing that so-and-so's car is coming up. So, the kids are getting ready and moving out and moving right along. So, it'll really, it could expedite stuff. So, but more to come on the cost of that project.
Andy, do you see any issues with buses leaving Fenmore as in conjunction with cars pulling into that area?
So, what'll happen, I appreciate also, as Tim and I talked this out earlier today, is we'll make sure that the driveway is double lane right there. We have none of the buses at that, they're, they're already coming from the middle school, high school areas. And in actuality, because of having it so that cars can, you know, continuously pull right in there, it'll free it up. Because right now, our buses, when they come over from the middle school or from the high school area, and they get caught in that parent line, they're, they're doomed until they can get up to the little building.
Okay.
David, I know you didn't read my sign language very well, but I was wondering if you had the copy to put up that included like what we have, the new loop? And that, no?
I, I had it on my computer, but I couldn't get my tech to grab.
That's okay. I was just sign language him earlier, and we didn't catch, but, okay.
I literally had it on my computer, ready to go, and I'm heading, that's why I walked over. They said I need help, so.
All right, that brings us to D. The first reading of the 166. Superintendent Shaw?
I would like to, I would like to, hold on. I'd like to do a point of order on the reading of D3, 3D through 3G. And I would like to make a motion on policy 131.1, which is bylaws and policies. And it said the board may adopt, amend, or repeal rules of order for its own operation by a simple resolution of the board passed by a majority of those present in voting. This is a nonprecedenting motion. We are changing the way we adopt policies in current structure, what we're doing. So, I would like to make a motion that we abide by policy 131.1 as we are repealing rules of order in this process and have that reflective only for this board meeting, board meeting 15.
And, and I'll second that. And if I understand things correctly, we're doing that because we have two different options on two different policies. So, we're eliminating kind of one of the options.
Right, which I, which could have been done during a work session. But instead of doing it at a work session, we are completing it at the board meeting, which is why I think it's, it's important for us to do this motion.
I agree.
Can you support it?
I support that, yeah.
Jamie, could we have roll call?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
I'm still.
For point of order?
I did.
He did.
Yeah.
We don't need one for.
Well, we don't, well, that's true.
But, but in order to make a motion to amend according to policy 131, we would need a motion by the board in order to amend our operation because this is not the way we typically do it so that we can do it for this meeting and get it accomplished as we have on there. And that was the reason for it.
So, it's more than a point of order, Jackson?
Yeah. I called it a point of order, but then I moved it into a, what do you call it? Incidental motion? Yeah. Thank you for that.
For clarity, this is allowing the option one or two.
To continue for this meeting and not for meetings after this. It's not precedent setting then.
Just as a first reading, we're gonna eliminate one of those two options on those two policies.
We don't typically do it that way.
And there'll still be a first reading though, so.
Yes, there'll still be considered a first reading.
So, roll call, please, Jamie. Does, does everybody understand what, what you're voting on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. And that brings us back to.
Well, no, we'll have to then determine.
3D.
Of the. D, which one?
Yep, 3D first reading.
So, can I make a suggestion on that as well?
The D, right?
That we make a motion on each of the options and vote on them separately?
Okay.
And then move the one that passed as the first reading?
I believe that's what we're doing anyway, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
So, does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, this is for.
116.
166, right?
Yeah.
D first reading, PO 0166 agenda.
Okay, then I, I move to approve the first reading of option B of policy 166 agenda.
I'll support that.
And B is which one again?
B is.
Removal and postponed.
Okay, so this is not the Neola policy. This is the one that we talked about.
It's a portion of the.
Yeah.
So.
Let me get to the right page.
Yeah, for clarification, this is policy 166. And it is, option B is the board requested edit to include the words removed or postponed to paragraph number four of the current policy.
Well, what do you say if the board does that when we vote for it?
Yes, I'm reading.
That right there will be our decision.
Yes.
Okay. Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
No.
Mrs. Williams. Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
No. So, I'm confused. I think the motion did carry.
The motion carried?
Yep.
So, option B will be considered.
Will be the first reading.
The first reading tonight of policy 166, including the changes.
Okay.
Okay?
That brings us to.
All right, that's one down.
That's one, that's D. Ah, let's see.
All right.
So, we have E. First reading of 2266. Superintendent Shaw?
Yes. So, to bring clarity to our public that's watching and out there, the Board of Education is required to take first reading and then a second reading on board policies, and when the board, a second reading then puts it into formal policy.
No.
Tonight, they have, and with three of the four policies, there were two different options. An option one was a, one that was just the Neola recommendation. That's our company that helps us to write policy. And then the option B is a, is the addition of Neola. And then if a board member wanted something else added and/or removed. And so, that's when you hear the board saying, okay, option A or option B. In this next policy right here, there was no offerings of any further changes. And this is nondiscrimination based on sex education programs and activities. And so, all that happened inside this policy for the community is that we just had to come out and clearly state that our two executive directors are in charge of our title line coordinator, coordinators, I'm sorry. And so, that's, that's why there's no options on that. They're just moving to make this a first reading, that policy.
Are we doing a motion on it?
We don't have a motion on first reading.
It says on here, move to, that's why I'm asking.
We normally don't have a motion on the first. Well, okay, we can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Is there a motion?
We're just gonna make a motion that policy 2266, nondiscrimination, the basis of sex in education programs or activities be considered as the first reading.
I'll support that.
Is there support?
Yeah.
Have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to F. The first reading of 2414. Superintendent Shaw?
And on this one, as I was sharing a moment ago, this has two options. Option A is the recommendation was made by Neola. Option B is the recommendation made by Neola along with a recommended change by a board member. All that they did, and Neola did inside of this policy for our community is some grammatical changes from, and calling out, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one here. Thank you, I appreciate that. It has to do with one big change, and it's around the idea of students being able to discuss with others. This one has to do with abortion right there, and so that was the major change, so.
I will make a motion to approve the first reading of option B, which changes the language from K to 12 to 6 through 12 for the reproductive health and family planning.
I'll support that.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Do we want discussion on this? Can we have discussion on this?
We've got two options. I don't see.
I just think it's, it's important for sometimes us to clarify. I just think it's, it's important for sometimes us to clarify. The, the language change from six to 12 that was recommended by a board member is made to comply with the usage of the HIV videos for grades six through 12. So this is only referencing those in six through 12. Just so it's not the whole thing.
For the people that teach, six through 12. For training those who teach six through 12. It's not for students in grades six through 12.
Yeah, it's to train, making sure people are trained who is ever teaching sixth through 12 grade in that, yes. Thank you, Mary.
Well, I would also point out that paragraph two is slightly different as well.
This is on the A and B option?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's different?
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Mrs. Vincent.
No.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Dr. Behrens.
No.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
No. So the motion fails. So that brings us back to, does somebody want to make a motion on A?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of option B for policy 2414, respect for health and family planning.
Is there support for this motion?
No.
B.
You mean A.
I was going to say, we just voted on that.
Is there support for this?
Yes.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
No.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
No.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. I believe the motion carries. All right, that brings us to the first reading of 6320, Superintendent Shaw.
Thank you. This is the purchasing policy. So there are two recommendations in front of the board. The first one is the Neola recommendations, is the following recommendation was made by Neola. A technical correction is being made to include a cross-reference to the policy 6350, prevailing wage, with the intent of encouraging districts to review all related content during implementation. Also includes miscellaneous grammar punctuation corrections. That's option A. Option B is the exact same materials with the addition of, from a board member of adding the word services in the procurement of what we do for purchasing.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt option B.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Other than it's going to bring it back to where our policy was prior to the other change, when we changed it before, so.
I'd also, I'd also like to state that recently we've had high cost in services lately that far exceeded sometimes any kind of other purchases that we're making. So I think it brings it in line with fiscal responsibility. I also look at, in the bottom part of this policy, services and goods are included in an emergency section. So for an emergency usage, it says services and goods there anyway. So.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us down to H, it would be the ratification of the Monroe City Education Secretarial Association, Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. We're excited tonight. We have several members of that union sitting in our audience tonight. And I'm glad they're here because they are the smiling faces that everyone sees when they enter the building. So the girls, thank you for coming tonight. We're asking the board tonight to move to ratify the master agreement for July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2026, between the Monroe City Educational Secretary Association, MEA/NEA, and the Monroe Board of Education effective July 1, 2024.
Is there a motion?
I move to ratify the master agreement for July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2026, between the Monroe City Educational Secretary Association, MEA/NEA, and the Monroe Board of Education effective July 1, 2024.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
No.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to Waterloo bond work. Ms. Shook?
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we're asking the board to move to award the following base bids. $108,900 from Crisman Contractors for bid category 002A. $1,039,000 from The Speaker Company for bid category 006A. $344,600 from Adrian Mechanical Services for bid category 023B. $8,200 from Fisex for bid category 023E. $267,540 from Stalegrave Turner Electric for bid category 026A. $88,412 for general conditions for Clark Construction. And $176,824 for construction contingencies. The total bid package of number six approval is not to exceed $2,33476 and will be funded from the Bond Capital Projects Fund.
Is there a motion? No motion? Pardon?
I think nobody wants to read it all, so I will move towards the base of work at Waterloo with the 2025 bond funds.
Can we put in there not to exceed the $2,330?
Definitely.
Okay, $33,476?
$2,33476.
Is there support for this?
I'll support it.
Any discussion?
Do we have anything for our local architect in here? Or is that just going to be, how's that going to be working?
We already have Kohler Architecture on for the bond work, architecture work.
Yeah, so we don't have to prove that in this?
Yep, he has a separate agreement already with the district for the bond projects.
Is his contract for the fifth year that's for this?
It's ongoing for all the bond work until it's completion.
Okay.
I still got concerns as, as far as the long-term plan for Waterloo. I just, my concern is based on the fact that we put a lot of money into Lincoln School and then, then we closed it and had it torn down, which was a lot of money we just threw away. We have declining enrollment, so I just don't see the need for, for redoing this to Waterloo School.
I concur with that because the one thing on the Waterloo project is where we at. I know I asked some questions about this when this came up in, in the work session as well. When you're looking at what are the long-term plans, $2 million is a lot of money. The students that were at Waterloo have been relocated within the district, and it sounds like from the short time that that's been going on, it's been successful. I haven't, I haven't heard any feedback that was negative upon that. So to fill another school at this point at $2 million, I also, as Tom, I struggle with the necessity and what the future is holding with that.
And it may be disruptive to the students too if they have to transfer back, or perhaps other students may be brought there. I think we should have some long-term planning before we actually use our resources to improve buildings. Not that we shouldn't improve buildings, we should, but I mean, obviously, but we should have some long-term plans. How are we going to use that building? Where is it going to be best utilized, et cetera? Is it going to be pre-K? It's going to be K through six, whatever. I think we should at least have some kind of discussion on that. And maybe even involve the community on their thoughts on it too, before we put $2 million bucks in it. Like Tom said, I remember when we did Lincoln as well.
Yeah.
We put a whole bunch of money in the windows and we tore down a building with very good windows in it, which was kind of a waste of money.
Yeah, the, the other point is, as I mentioned, our enrollment has dropped probably on average about 4% per year the last six, seven years. So we have capacity in our existing buildings, whether it's Arborwood, Custer, Manor, and Raisenville. I just don't see a couple of years down the road, if this trend continues, not needing that facility. And it's not just the bond work, but then it's the cost to maintain the building to keep it operational.
Wasn't there discussion on the age of the building? Isn't it an aging building compared to others in the district? Am I missing?
No, Waterloo actually had a older addition on it a long, long time ago, and this was the new addition to the old part, actually.
Okay.
But it's still an aging facility, no question.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Do we know the age of that facility? Any chance, Dave?
27? It's actually in the front too. It's in the foyer. And I want to say it's 27, but that, I think that was the main part of it, when it was added down. I want to say the 50s, but I may be wrong on that.
It, it was, but we did just put several millions, I mean, not millions, but with the air conditioning and the mechanical and electrical upgrade. So that's the only reason, I would just say if we're going to look at it as an entirety, that, not that I want to recommend closing any building, but that building, we did just sink a lot of money in as far as air conditioning, electrical, mechanical.
So from a board decision standpoint, when we look and say, well, we've already stuck this much money into it, we might as well continue, that doesn't sound very fiscally responsible. I think that Tom's point of who's going to go in here. I believe Larry's point of what is the plan before we allocate $2 million, that's a lot of money. Let's, I would make to make a motion to postpone this motion on this policy until we are able to answer.
Well, the problem is we already have a motion on the table. We'll have to finish this one up.
Well, you can postpone a motion even after it's made.
I don't believe you can. Jeremy, if you want to chime in here?
That was my, that was my motion, amendment.
I didn't ask for an amendment. I asked for a postponement.
Yeah, we, we have, we have to vote on the one that's on the table.
Then we can vote to postpone.
Right.
Well, it's too late after once it's passed. I was going to pull out my notes because I actually did bring my notes today.
So if I, if you can give me a couple of moments here. First, we don't disagree that there has been a declining enrollment. I mean, we're trying to do what can stop that. The other part being is when we say that our buildings have room, here, I'm going to ask for you to hop in here because I know you've been in and out, but Manor, no room. Raisenville, no room. Okay, so those two buildings are full. And when we look at, if we weren't offering the services that we offer now that we once, I mean, 15 years ago, we didn't offer the services that we offer today. So we have a lot of support staff and others that are in our buildings that are not going anywhere, that take up spaces that would have never been there when we had larger enrollments. So when we look at that space, we also know that, when we've been sharing with you, that preschool, more preschoolers are coming. And we want to get more preschoolers in the door. And so that is limited though to based on your square footage, either 16 to 18 students in a classroom. So you can't go above that. So when we look at the, at Waterloo, and we look at the, that design of that building and the money that's been put in there, it's aired up, it makes great sense to keep going into that realm right there. I think the bigger conversation I know we're going to be having here down the road is, what do we do about Monroe Middle School? I mean, you've got, if you want to have a conversation, it says at Monroe Middle School, it's a 100-year-old building. That's a big, so I think we have more conversation ahead there, but this building is, honestly, is going nowhere for Monroe Public. And it's one of those buildings where, I'm going to have Terry hop in right here because I know she's, as I've been in these buildings and, and when it comes to the capacities.
Yeah, so one of the things that has happened this school year is with the movement of the Waterloo students into the other buildings. Obviously, that meant that more classrooms needed to be used for classrooms. So that put most of the encore teachers on carts. So we have our art gym, not gym, art, music, and technology, and most of the buildings are on carts. So those teachers do not have classrooms. They travel to the actual classroom and instruct in there instead of having classrooms of their own. A lot of like the intervention work, some of the schools have intervention happening in the cafeterias with tables set up because they don't have those classrooms available any longer. So it did, it was, it's doable with what we have. I wouldn't say it's ideal, but it is doable. And as Andy had said, with our hope to expand preschool program, preschool programming, we do need to think about where those classrooms will go if we increase the number of opportunities that we have.
Do we currently lease out any rooms at any building?
I think we only lease out the special education rooms, is that right?
Yes.
Andy?
Yep. They're really all special ed rooms. I believe there's three, three or four that we lease out.
And that's to the ISD?
All the rest are ran through either Head Start or GSRP, which that is through the ISD. So to bring clarity, that, those are leased also, but they are servicing all of our students.
They are servicing Monroe Public School students.
Just like the preschool, special education classrooms are also educating Monroe Public School students. The number that we need to have to be able to provide complete preschools, you know, for all of our incoming, those three-year-olds, four-year-olds, it's 12 more classrooms. So if you're wondering, okay, what's that number look like? It's 12 classrooms. So we begin to look at if we wanted to make it so that we're able to offer. The amazing part is, it's not like we have to wait for the state to come out and make that happen. The ISD can work through the state for more slots. It's all based on space. So for example, if we're coming forward right now and say, okay, we're ready to offer up four more slots to the ISD, say for GSRP or preschool, I can start. They would go through the licensing process based on that building, we would have the, the classroom space for. And so, so whatever even the state decides to do about preschool, it's kind of irrelevant because we could work through the ISD to get more kids in with that space.
I, I'm sorry to interject. I, in a bond presentation from when we were seeking the bond, it has listed that Waterloo Elementary was built in 1957, which I'm sure is the addition.
I didn't catch all of that.
67.
57.
57.
Now it's 67 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Darling, from the, there was a presentation still posted on the website from when we were seeking the Bond Village. And it has listed that Waterloo Elementary was built in 1957, just for.
Okay. Well, thank you.
That's a newest addition.
Which I'm sure is correct.
That's the new part, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
What about Riverside?
So Riverside has, is housing all preschool programs and Kids Club currently.
Our ISD.
One Monroe Public School program, so one Rainbow preschool program. And then the rest are Head Start, GSRP classrooms.
Which is ISD.
Correct.
So how many?
But there are kids.
So how many are at Riverside?
Oh, gosh.
12 full classroom. Well, if you tell them, click some.
13.
And we use one for ourselves?
One for Monroe Public Schools preschool, yes.
We have 12 extra rooms that we could theoretically use if we didn't lease them out. So. Pardon? Kids Club, yeah. Okay, so two.
But that would mean what you're describing though is that we, us taking over the preschools.
Well, it sounds like that's what you're saying.
We can't take over the preschools.
Well, that's where I'm, where's this whole preschool thing coming in all of a sudden? Because it sounds like you just said.
For many months that we need to be working towards preschool for our kids in Monroe Community Schools.
So that was a decision made by, I'm, I'm just trying to get, I don't know, we as a board voted that we should bring in preschool programs? I don't know we as a board voted any of that.
Preschool programs we have currently right now, we didn't add, I don't think, a single preschool classroom this year. Or is it, do we have to, we actually maybe offered two more. Otherwise, all the rest were already in our system before this board was even doing anything.
So, and we had, they all have current space.
GSRP and Head Start.
Yes. So if it's current and it's where it is, and there's no plans to be more delving into preschool, then I'm, I'm still not catching the whole Waterloo fit. Because, you know, Waterloo, like, to, to just, like, it happened. We found out about it, maybe the same time the community did, I'm not sure. It was pretty close to the same timing. And so now we're asked to put $2 million into Waterloo. And I know, you know, keep asking, like, what's the plan? And, and you say, well, it's going to be preschool. Well, I mean, I kind of asked about that a little bit yesterday. So if the plan is to make Waterloo a preschool, then I think it should be put out there before we put $2 million. Other than that, I would like to make a motion to postpone the vote on this motion until two.
We cannot do that till we finish what we've already got on the table.
We just, we just clarified it, Scott and I, that you, in order to postpone a motion, there must be a motion on the table. You cannot postpone a already concluded motion. So the postponing of a motion is saying, I'd like to postpone it until two more board meeting number 17, so that we have time to get clarified what the plans are for Waterloo before we spend $2 million on updoing Waterloo. And that's my motion.
We can't do that, there's already a motion on the table.
Yeah, so you have to.
It can be.
So let me, may I please intercede?
Jump right in here.
Okay. So through what I have learned is that what our parliamentarian is saying is correct in that you can postpone a motion that has not been voted. correct, in that you can postpone a motion that has not been voted on yet. And since we have a motion and a second, and we have not voted on that motion yet, we are still at a space where we can have a motion to postpone. We still need a second to postpone. And this is a postponement to a specific date. Am I correct?
And that would be board number, board meeting number seventeen. We're at fifteen. So Jamie, you got a date on that?
So what our parliamentarian, what Darla is suggesting, is exactly what needs to happen for a postponement of a motion that's already on the table. So like, we're, we're in a good space, and we can do it, but we need to be very clear that Darla's motion is to postpone this particular agenda item to board meeting number seventeen.
The twenty-fourth.
Which is October the twenty-fourth.
Or September twenty-fourth.
September.
September the twenty-fourth. Wait.
That can't be September twenty-fourth. We're on number fifteen.
Board number seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
So that would be.
It's like the second Tuesday of October.
October eighth.
October eighth.
That would be our October the.
Which is the Monday workshop that I said we had. Because we have one scheduled for the seventh, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have a, on the first Monday of the month?
Remember, it's a special one that got scheduled. We just talked about it earlier.
Well, if it's the seventh, it has to be.
The work session would have to be two weeks before for following what we're doing. So the work session would have to be held towards the end of September.
Before we go too far, for the sake of argument, let's, let's second the motion so we can at least discuss it.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
So what's the thought? Is, do we want to have some discussion on the?
Usage of Waterloo long-term plan and goal.
Okay.
In order to vote to put $2 million into that, so we don't have, as Tom indicated, another Lincoln situation.
Would we look at the population demographics as Tom has indicated?
We can look at anything, obviously.
Will we have the enrollment day or the student count day is October second?
Ah, yes.
Correct.
So will we have those numbers then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think if, if I, from my understanding, for this, for our discussion, the, the content that we would like to have at this next meeting, for our understanding, is enrollment data from our count day, and a very clear plan for the utilization of Waterloo per this proposed spending.
That would have to be a work session in between the board meeting, because that would be a lot to put into a board meeting.
And in addition to the popular, current population, I wonder if we should look at the projected population as well. Because again, Waterloo's not even going to be open until at least next year.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay. So using enrollment data, we're going to ask for that projected population, and taking that into consideration for what Waterloo will be used for long-term.
And clarification.
Clarification of grade levels, facility usage.
Given this elementary, you'll probably go and need census data to get some of that projection kind of data.
Right, okay. And I wonder.
I'd just like to say a few words about the original motion. If I can get my mic off. And the reason I made that motion is because we emptied Waterloo last May on the premise that we were going to do this bond work over the school year because it was going to save us money to do it now versus to do it throughout the summer. In addition to that, I'm not in the business of closing buildings or tearing down buildings, and that's definitely not on my radar as a board member. I feel like we need to get this building taken care of, maintained, up to code, toilets in the right spots for little ones, all of that good stuff. Otherwise, we just displaced all of those teachers and those students for nothing. And that is, that's what I want to say on that motion.
I do agree with you, Carrie. I wish some of these conversations had taken place prior to this. I agree.
Let's call for a vote.
I wonder if we should also get, I wonder if we should also get some information, for example, if we're going to lease this out to pre-K or whatevernot, or maybe some idea who that's going to be leased to, or if it's going to be us ourselves. How, how is that program going to be run? I mean, is it, I guess if I was a, in private business, I would have a business plan.
Right.
And I guess I would ask for something of that sort. So before I put $2 million bucks, I want some kind of a business plan, knowing that I'm going to be able to use that wisely.
Jamie, you'll be able to pull together all these recommendations and suggestions that were done. Thank you. There were a lot.
I voted no.
Okay, let me see, because, make sure you say that, because you're the only one that's on the board then.
Right.
Yes. So, and then I just, for my understanding, are you postponing this to the board meeting number seventeen?
Yes. And the in-between would be a scheduled work session to handle it. I don't need to put that in a motion. I just need to postpone this motion to a particular date. What happens in between that time?
Thank you.
That's why I gave two, two meetings time line.
Thank you.
Just a quick clarification. I know you and Tom, you and I talked about this before on the postponement. And what I thought we read was that a postponement had to come back to the, at the next meeting.
That's a table.
But we never use the word table, though, anymore, because that was, we were.
But it's still a table.
We're afraid to use that term.
It's still a table.
No, it's not.
No.
No, we're not, no. I'm, I'm clarifying Andy's point that what he is referencing is that word, not the postponement that we're suggesting.
All right, let's have the vote, Jamie.
Mrs. Williams.
I just took a bite of my cookie.
Oh, sorry, don't laugh. Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
No, and the motion carries. That brings us to Jump Rope Reader. Ms. Joseph.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we ask the board to move to approve the purchase of Jump Rope Reader's Classroom Bundle from Heinemann for a total cost not to exceed $65,522.16. This purchase would be made using 35J grant funds.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of the Jump Rope Reader Classroom Bundle.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Just question, which grade levels is, will this cover?
It will cover all kindergarten for second-grade classrooms, and they will receive the fiction set of books and the nonfiction set of books.
Across all our buildings?
Across all of the buildings, yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Oh, correct, right.
Correct. And our, our, our staff developers from the teacher college will be providing that professional development.
So just to catch everybody up, previously, there was, we voted, the board voted to approve professional development at 300, and it was just shy of $400,000 in order to educate the staff, and that these are the materials that are now needed in order to complete that loop. So without these, the other 300 and some thousand dollars is pretty much none.
Right. We, we will be utilizing those staff developers to help teachers to fully implement this resource in their classroom instruction. You said that very well, Darla. That was really good.
Thanks, Jamie. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. K through five writing units, Ms. Joseph, you again.
Thank you. We next ask the board to move to approve the purchase of the K-5 writing units of study at a cost not to exceed $59,967.18 from Heinemann. And this would also be purchased using 35J funds.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the purchase of the K-5 writing units of study.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
This is the same reiteration of the previous usage. Correct, Ms. Joseph.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. As we have no old business tonight, I will turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for superintendent comments.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So started the school year up and moving, you know, transportation this year didn't start as smooth as we were hoping. When we went out, we got a lot of new faces, but we are happy to be able to say that it is moving much, much smoother this week, which we knew would, would come. But I want to put a big thank you always out to our staff for getting everything going. It's an exciting time. On September the nineteenth, our band and orchestra cheerleaders are going to the elementaries like they do every year, and recruiting and getting kids excited about the arts, and so excited for that trip around there. And then it's hard to believe already, but next week is homecoming week, just like that. And so hopefully, the storm that's brewing down there in the Gulf, it kind of hits that high pressure and stalls out. So next week is ninety degrees every day, like they're kind of calling for, which will make everyone happy. So next Wednesday night, if you want to come out to the Powderpuff game at 7:30, hey, you might have to be in a t-shirt and shorts because it'll still be hot, rather than what we saw last weekend, where it about froze. Seventy's okay, too. And then the homecoming parade is at five o'clock on Friday, starts at Monroe Middle School, ends at Knights of Columbus. Homecoming game is at seven. And so it is an exciting time. We are playing Celine High School for homecoming. So that's all I, we're going to end on that one right there.
Darla, do we have any public commentary?
No, we don't.
All right. Board member commentary.
I do have one comment. I received, I think most of us received an email from this, one of our parents indicating that apparently she was in the Waterloo district, and she got transferred to Arborwood. But she chose Custer as the school of choice. Apparently, there's two bus stops near her home. The closest one goes to Custer, and the other one goes to Arborwood. And that's bus number 27. And I asked Andy this morning, is bus number 27 filled? And apparently, it's about 50% filled. I wonder if we could just, I know we don't normally, you know, provide transportation for school of choice, but I mean, it's our student, and it's closest to her. It would really help the children, I think. So I wonder if we could just make an exception and allow her children to ride bus number 27 to Custer.
Just make sure you can't wear your opening when your phone starts ringing.
I think this is related, but this is related to Waterloo. This is related to Waterloo changes, so I think that makes a difference.
That's why I ask, is bus number 27 filled? Because again, if it's full, we're not, you know, we don't provide transportation to Raisenville if you live in, I don't know, Custer District or something. But I mean, if it's in our area, it doesn't affect us. And I know this was not the first, Julie's the one that actually initiated this, so I would just say, why don't we just continue and just allow this lady to have her children on the bus? That's only half full.
Anyone else?
I do. I know we addressed this last year, and I'm going to bring it up again this year. The Bs at the stadium are pretty pervasive. I know that there were plans that were implemented last year that helped dramatically with the B situation. It was noted to me that there's a lot of spilled sugary drinks on the ground. So maybe one solution could be including the blacktop, maybe addressing that. I don't know. That was brought up to me. So I pass it along to you. The other thing I bring up is the Monroe Public Schools Community Education, and I believe we just hired the person for this, right? She left already? Yeah. So it was interesting that that's on my members' comments. The flag football team is for youth five through third grade. The people that signed up paid $75. It was for seven weeks, one practice, and then six weeks of practice and a game. So it would be one hour practice prior to the game. So that's what they signed up for. They have been reduced to five weeks with one practice and then four practice slash games, but there was no reduction in cost.
That's not true.
Okay.
They are all receiving.
Okay, first of all, I'm just relaying to you the information that I received. So thank you.
And I'm just answering you. It hasn't been communicated to the parents. It was just discussed today, the official reduction of the season due to the amount of students that we had signed up. And all the folks that paid the $75 will be receiving a $25 refund.
So the information I got didn't include that. So thank you for clarifying.
Correct. Yep. That's all. I was just trying to clarify that for you.
Anyone else?
Just had a question. I think in the board briefs, I saw that for Orchard High School, there's going to be some access to some of the CTE programs. Is that correct? Is it going to be the full CTE or just a few select programs?
They, they have access to all the programming that's available. A lot of that depends on the availability and their schedule. And they, juniors and entry level, you know, you know, auto body 101, so to speak. So we're already looking to increase those numbers, but we're excited to have those kids there, taking advantage of the opportunity.
Good. Thank you.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Support? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Take care, everybody.